All right, seeing as we have a full house, let's call this meeting to order at 6:07. We'll start with the invocation and the pledge, and then we'll go straight into public comment. Father, thank you for every seat that's been filled here today, for each mind and heart that fills the presence of this room, we thank you. Only you truly know what we're setting out to accomplish today. Every project, every season, every life, nothing is ever in vain, for even mistakes and missteps are used for good. Bless this meeting today, all those present, as well as the lives of those we will encounter afterward, ready us to make every moment count. Please bless our neighbors as they recover from last night's fire, and we remember in prayer our military and first responders who protect and serve at home and abroad, in Jesus' name, amen.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi, Ms. Jane, did we have any public comments?
No.
It looks like Kristy Smith.
It's just general, right? Comments? Kristy Smith, 36630 Canyon Road. I just want to say that this weekend is our spring clean, support local. We have 20 local vendors come out and face painter, funnel cake and hot dogs and all that good stuff, and support Simonton and everybody that makes this happen. So some of you are on social media, so I wanted to mention it tonight, or today, tonight. And that's it.
Thank you. Ms. Kristy, Beth O'Vant is right next to...
Anthony's, 10 to 4.
Okay.
You got 10 to 4.
And it's a fundraiser for...
Keep Simonton Beautiful.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Don't y'all read my name?
I didn't. It looks like Ms. Bard Mitten. I was spelling it out just because I didn't know, I just checked out.
Okay, Ms. Linda Frost.
Same thing.
I spelled it in verse.
Abby Ferguson?
I don't know.
Just...
I just signed my name.
I feel like a school teacher reading out. Present, present.
I thought you had to check.
Connie and Carl Chapman.
I wanted to talk about something, but after.
Okay. Looks like Tanya, forgive me, lives on Cheyenne Road.
I just put my name on the...
Oh, okay. Thanks, Connie. Monica Clark.
Same, I just put my name.
Thank you. Deb Subressula.
No, I thought we were just signing into the meeting.
Okay. Ms. Karen Subressula.
The same.
Okay, thank you. And it looks like Sue here.
Same thing.
Okay. Roger.
She signed in.
It looks like Cindy Frost again, and then Susan LaDart.
I just signed in.
Okay.
All right, thanks everybody for submitting. All right, item 4 on our agenda is the town hall presentation, the draft comprehensive plan. I think that's why everybody's here, we're pretty excited about it. The committee that's worked on this plan has been at work for about a year, and so I'm going to turn it over to the Ardua folks to let y'all hear what's been developed and the feedback that they've collected, what that means for us next.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for all of you to be here today. And first, I would just like to introduce the important players in this process. Of course, the city staff, who can really help together, the city council, who took the initiative to get this planning process started. I think it's a very timely endeavor, great for the city of Simonton. And I would really like to thank the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee. So if I may, if you could just raise your hand, all the CPAC members that are here. Again, thank you so much. They spent a lot of long hours, they spent about four meetings here, and they were the guiding force behind the comprehensive plan. As consultants, we don't know your community, but we facilitate the process to understand. So what you see here is really what we have heard from the community and guided by CPAC and staff. So thank you all for giving us the opportunity, and we continue to work with you to get this adopted. We are very excited for the city of Simonton. And I do have Ardua team here, we have our transportation planning experts, and again, we couldn't have done this without Joe. Joe Edge is an economic development consultant, and he played a great role in making sure that these plans were culled in economic reality, financial realities, and making sure that the city is poised to do well economically in the future. So land use decisions, as you all know, affect both the community and the future of the city. So with that, the format of this meeting, it's really a town hall meeting where, you know, you're supposed to look at the boards, but I thought it would be helpful if I just gave you a very brief presentation on the process and what you see here, and then open it up for you to, you know, mingle and look at all the boards that we have and ask us any questions. So again, with that, I'm just going to get it started. Yeah, so just a little bit on the introduction to comprehensive plan. This is a great moment for Simonton because this is your first comprehensive plan. And so why do cities really plan? Because one, the Texas law does require that for some programs and for some city actions, comprehensive planning is needed. It also helps to bring the community together and unify them to have a common vision, and then it serves to guide all the decisions that you take. It's almost like any decision that's made about development, land use, culture, arts, hopefully you can go back to the plan and say, let's see what the community wants. And then it definitely helps with financial planning, knowing where you're going to be in the next 10 years, next 20 years, and there are a lot of other reasons. You know, just making sure you're sustainable, you're resilient, and you're poised to take in all the growth, as you all know, unfortunately is coming your way. So it is in your hands to make sure that you channel the growth in a manner that you would like to. And so why now? Again, the timing is really important because, as you know now, Fort Bend County is one of the fastest growing cities, counties in the U.S., and Fullsher is a great example that it is one of the fastest growing cities in Fort Bend County. So and you can see Simonton is right in the path of that growth. And Fort Bend County actually is projected to grow by over 25 percent. And I know it's not good news for those of us who try to make it on time. Every street was really crowded, and I look at Ankor, because he's a thoroughfare expert, we need some actions to be taken so that we don't, you know, put ourselves in the condition where we can't even get home. And then also, so it is anticipated that the Simonton's population will grow with everything that's happening around. And so one of the reasons cities plan is, again, like I said, to have a vision, that the community comes together and says, this is what we want for the community collectively, and then have a plan to get there, and kind of have a roadmap. And then what that means is the plan needs to have an implementation strategy. So I was telling somebody here, the comprehensive plan in itself is not something that's going to change the way you do things overnight. It's a vision, it's a 30,000-level roadmap, a number of things are required after that to make it happen. So just saying we want healthy neighborhoods is not going to happen unless certain things are taken, implementation strategy is in place, and so we have a whole section on implementation strategy. The CPAC actually went through every recommendation that they had, and they prioritized it. All that is in your report, we have some boards to show you what it looks like, but I would really urge you to go back to the website and read the whole report. It's kind of hard to encapsulate everything in 10 minutes, but I thought it would be good for you to know what's there. And so again, we keep talking about change, and like I said, this is our way of making sure that we know how to deal with change, or at least have a plan to deal with it. And just to look at, you know, all the surrounding cities, as you can see, all the cities that are shown with the red dot and letters have comprehensive plans. So as you can see, Sealy, Patterson, Rookshire, Katy Fullsher are the cities around you that have it. So they're all using this document to guide their future growth. Just a little bit about the process, like the mayor said, it took us about 12 months to get here. I think the most important part of the process was public involvement and public engagement. So CPAC, as I said, was with us all along the way. Every, just every finding, every recommendation was passed by them. As I said, they helped us prioritize the recommendations, integrate them, some recommendations were taken out, others were put in based on their input. And so that's why I'm really thankful for all the CPAC members for taking so much time. And so where we are is kind of in the finalization stage. After the town hall meeting, we would be gearing towards adoption. So with the help of the CPAC, we did a lot of visioning sessions, and talk a little bit more about that, but this is the vision statement that CPAC helped to create. And really, as you see, that one of the biggest things that stands out is the rural character, a family-friendly community, natural resources, and one thing that came up was in the future somehow to have some kind of small scale downtown where your two roads intersect. Again, something that is in character with Simonton. And then also making sure that resilience, resiliency was a big factor, as you know, you have a lot of flooding issues, so how do we take care of that? And then also providing opportunities for small businesses to stay in Simonton, to grow in Simonton, and to come to Simonton. And I'm not going to go through all the guiding principles, but there were some overarching themes. One was character, so if you look at the board, you'll see some principles that the CPAC came on how to preserve the character. Downtown was another theme, land use and growth, housing and neighborhoods, open space recreation, infrastructure, of course, mobility is always important, resiliency and sustainability and economic development. So these were the main, as I said, focus areas that emerged from all the meetings and kind of made it into the guiding principles. So if you look at that for each of these, CPAC and what we heard from the community helped list all these principles together. So this report is online, again, I would urge you to look at it, and based on the themes that you saw, the report is kind of broken up into those sections, and each section basically has a small introduction to what is existing now. So it captures the current snapshot of the community, and then goes into the guiding principles that came from our community engagement process, and then has some broad recommendations. Most importantly, we made sure that there was an implementation plan. Having the best plan is not meaningful unless you know what the next steps are. So the purpose of the implementation plan is to guide the city to get there in the next 10, 15 years. And just to emphasize that this is a living document, just because it's adopted does not mean it cannot change. Amendments can be made, you know, sections can be removed, sections can be added on, and that's important because cities are not static. Cities grow, and unfortunately, what happens in Simonton is really affected by what happens around you. A major thoroughfare goes in next doors, or comes, you know, a major development comes next doors, all that is going to affect Simonton. So as things evolve, it's important for the city to kind of reevaluate their plan every year, just like you do with your strategic plan, and see if it's still relevant or what things need to change. So community engagement, like I said, we had a, we call it the CPAC, which is the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee that was appointed, and with them, we worked through the process. We went through a lot of interactive exercises. As you remember, we used our phones to do some meter polling, and this is what some of the questions that were posed, and this is, the results kind of looked like graphs. All this is in the report, all the questions that were added and how the CPAC voted is in the report, so please look at that. And then we did some dot exercises, trying to, you know, get some more information. We had a map where they actually mapped out the assets, the problems, and there is a snapshot of the map here, but again, it's all in the report. And then in addition to that, we had online surveys that were put on the website. The summary of the survey is also in the report, so make sure you go all the way through the appendix, because that's where all the good stuff is. Stakeholder meetings, we actually called and talked to the major stakeholders, and then, of course, this is the town hall meeting, kind of present the recommendations and give some more feedback. This is what the online survey looked like. If you did go to the website, you saw that there was a button here, you could click it and then take the online survey. So again, we did some mapping exercises with CPAC and put all the recommendations together, and kind of those recommendations started coming together in the form of a future land use map. So we looked at the character of the existing areas, what does the, let's see, what do the areas look like, you know, what could be the cultural downtown center? Again, the CPAC actually drew all this, and then based on the character barriers, and looking at other considerations. One of the things that you all know is most of the cities included in the Twinwood development, and Twinwood is doing some great work in the city. So if they continue, or, you know, if they come back to change things, then what does the city want was the question. And this document kind of sets that vision for future considerations. And then the biggest one was that, if you look at the FEMA map, I don't have to, you all know this, most of the cities in the flood plain, so what does that mean? And if you look at our resiliency and sustainability section, there is some information there on what are some of the things that the city can do. So all that kind of came together into this land use map, and so it's a recommendation for the future land use map. The area was, you know, we had these six land use districts, and so what does the future land use map do? It's part of the comprehensive plan and basically designates land which would be suitable for the type of use. So single-family residential, where is it appropriate? If you have a commercial core, where would be the most appropriate place, things like that? So and then this map is displayed here, it kind of explains what these land use categories are. For example, rural residential, really rural lots, five acres, and again, all this input came from the CPAC. They struggled about, you know, what should the lot size be, where should this area be, and things like that. Again, I want to emphasize that this is a guide, and this is not zoning. So just because you have a map doesn't preclude somebody from putting a gas station in the middle of the town, right? Unless there are other regulations. The next step would be if the cities wish to adopt zoning. I really want to emphasize that, that just because this gets adopted, really, nothing is going to change tomorrow, except you have a roadmap to start making some other changes in terms of ordinances, regulations, and things like that. But it's important to have a plan. And then based on the land use map, and again, everything that's happening around, there is a thoroughfare plan that's included. It kind of follows the Fort Bend County's thoroughfare plan and tries to make sure that it kind of syncs with the Fort Bend County thoroughfare plan. And so what the thoroughfare plan does is, which is really important, and which affects your planning also, is it designates the street into what is a major thoroughfare, what is a collector, what is a local street, and starts setting some design recommendations. So as you can see, the thought was to make sure that all the thoroughfares have a rural character, so they have what, hopefully, what you see when you drive around is not going to change much, you'll still have the open spaces, medians, trees, which, when you have a plan, TechDOT is willing to work with the cities, but you need to tell TechDOT what you want. So the thought was taking in all that we heard, again, it's all in the report, to make sure it looks rural. I know Ankor's team helped us really look into what are the rural cross-sections that TechDOT will allow, and so some of that kind of made it here. And then again, we talked about the implementation, so you can see, we had all these recommendations on the board, and CPAC members. It was a grueling exercise, because, I know, they were like 150 recommendations, sorry about that, folks, but they had dots, and high priority was one color, medium was another, and low priority in terms of here. So as you can see, they started putting all the dots, and we took all that and did a prioritization table, which is actually in the report. So there were eight stations, and that helped us to publish all the recommendations. So what are the next steps? Again, thank you for being here, and, you know, we have the exhibits, you can look at them here, but please go to the website too and look at any section that's of special interest to you. And once that happens, to get this adopted, it's a public hearing and adoption process, and then the report gets finalized. And again, like I said, it's a guiding document, it is not ordinance, it's not regulation, those will come later with the city deciding what they want to pursue first. The implementation plan has priorities. One thing that did come up was, I think zoning was a big thing that the city was looking at, and so that's in the report, but there are so many other things, like even things like, you know, the lighting ordinance or tree preservation, so you'll see a lot of those recommendations there. So that was my presentation, and so if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer, or if you just want to mill around and look at the exhibits, we are here to help you. And just want to introduce Barbara, who just moved here.
A little bit of traffic.
Barbara is our local expert, has been here for a long time, and thanks Barbara for coming, she is very knowledgeable about the area.
Awesome. So we have about a little over 10 minutes left, and if you have questions, now a great time. If anybody wants to get up and look at the displays while the questions are going on, you're welcome to do that, be a little bit informal about it. Go ahead if you have questions.
Yeah, I have a super quick question. Do y'all know when, I know it's coming, when they're going to start to extend the toll road to Heritage Parkway, because I know that's the next leg.
They're conducting a study right now, so I don't know how that tie, the study they're doing is more to look at what other features, do you want the BRT on it, or some sort of route or something? So Fort Bend County is working with TechDOT and with Metro, the city, so I can find out and get back to you, but I know it's, it's definitely, they're looking to extend it, and it's definitely announced.
Because I know, because I lived in Fullsher when they extended it to where it's at now at Spring Green, and we went from 4,000, 5,000 people to 35,000 people because the thoroughfare went through. So it's, that's my fear, is like, once they start that construction, traffic's going to come this way, this place is going to explode.
I'll contact some folks and I'll ship the information to a lot of it. It's coming, you're right.
Hi, I understand that there's some people that believe that's not going to happen soon, but based on all this research and all the planning that we have done, what do your experts believe? Five years, 10 years, or is this all just a waste of time, or?
For the toll road?
No, for growth in Simonton. To prepare for it, how, do we need to prepare now, or do we need to sit back and wait 10 more years? Because there's many people in our community, many people in our community think it's not a big deal, and it's not coming fast, so I want to interrate your expertise and your intelligence that you can help people understand the importance of this.
Well, I'll start, but then I did not get Delinda this particular study, but I worked, you know, and with TechDOT and with some other agencies. Growth is coming, and like you just said, Fullsher has just exploded. You know, I was just meeting in Congressman Nell's office, and it's like, oh my gosh, you know, he can't keep up with a lot of the developments happening. So you're right next to Fullsher, and this area is growing, so personally, I think you need to start now.
Thank you.
Because you need to understand, do you want zoning? Do you want land use to be the way it is? How are you going to work with it, like Twinwood or some of the other developers? Because it's happening, and if you don't kind of take the bull by the horns, it's going to go.
It'll be blowing in the wind, yeah.
Right, and I think one thing that's going to happen is, a lot of it is developer driven too, and you know, they start with subdivisions and plating, and once the plat is approved and recorded without any requirements, it's vested. So then it's hard to undo things, so it's easy to, I think it's probably more prudent to have things in place before growth happens.
Thank you.
And that's the hard part to visualize sometimes, you feel, nothing is happening now.
Yes.
But I live in Pearland, and I saw what happened in 10 years, and you know, I wish I bought more land.
It doesn't have to be ahead of the curve.
Thank you.
So my question is on top of what Barbara just said, because obviously, we would be Fullsher right now if it wasn't for Twinwood. Twinwood owns everything, it's when they decide to build.
They don't own everything?
They don't own everything.
Okay, I was under the impression they pretty much own every property surrounding the area.
They own a lot.
So my point is, when they're starting to build over here, have they come to you and said what their plan is, when they're going to start developing all the stuff that they want?
Not the timeframe, they have a concept of what they think it might look like from here to I-10, but not a timeframe, and they're preparing something for a public presentation.
Because I, to me, when they start building, that's when we know it's going to start expanding, and so far, they've kind of kept everything from hitting here. But we're in areas right around us in the ETJ that they could, I'm watching developers, and they're running out of room in Fullsher, but they have not come out here yet.
No, they're begging for my shopping center right now.
I thought someone owned your shopping center.
Yeah, they do, but they want to tear it down, and they think they can do it.
So my question is...
The inquiries are there.
Yes, they're definitely asking. Yes, and I mean, I see them starting to build now, so thankfully, like I said, I feel like he's kept most of that pushed back, but now he's building over here, he's building over here, is he now in the process of trying to build up the whole area, is what I want to know, and if there was a timeline on that.
There's not a timeline, but you're right, I mean, a lot of that pulls from them, depends on the economics, you know, if the economy is slowing down, then they might slow down their plan, if they share, they have a...
And it's happened before, that, just what you said, because when Twinwood started buying property here, was when they were burnt developing Western Lakes, and Western Lakes went into a lull, and Twinwood just kind of followed the lull. So to predict that one, I mean, it's going to be, I'm sure it's going to depend a lot on what the economy does.
So there's 274, 273 available acres outside of what Twinwood owns.
273 total acreage?
Total acres inside city limits of Simonton.
That's street front.
That's, I'm sorry, that's street front.
273.
273 acres that Twinwood does not own, that's street.
That's why we need zoning.
No, I did not.
Doug, did you have a question?
I have one question. So you kept mentioning, this is on the website, this is on the website, what are we, what website?
It's on the city website.
The city of Simonton, okay.
City of Simonton, yeah.
Okay, okay.
SimontonTexas.gov.
Okay, all right, I just want to make sure...
I had all my notes to say that in a second.
Okay.
SimontonTexas.gov, if you go to the Comp Plan tab, which is actually the first one on the landing page, it'll drop down a menu, and you can see this plan, which is, you know, the big two deals, you can see every page of it.
You can also see all the CPAC meetings, the agendas, all the input that we receive from the public, Survey Monkey, everything is there. It's a fun sign.
Any other questions or comments today?
Like nighttime reading?
Thank you for all the work.
Yes, thank you.
Like I said, it all goes back to the CPAC, and we couldn't have done it without them. We are just the facilitator, so.
Okay, well, we will take about two minutes, three minutes of the job. Collect these boards and move unless you're planning to stay. The council will meet again next Tuesday to formally adopt the plan, so we're open to communication if you think of questions, if you have feedback, if you have something you think we could add or change this week, please feel free to contact us at info@simontonTexas.gov for calls, and we'll be sure and collect it before next week. All right, thanks, everybody. We're just going to pause there for a second so the displays can be picked up, and we'll go right into the rest of our council agenda for tonight. I'm going to record that at 6:50, that we will reach the meeting from our break. We're moving on to item 5, consider and take action. moving on to item five, consider and take action on the ordinance of the City Council of Simonton, Texas authorizing EDC-A, a type A economic development corporation, undertake any project that a type B EDC may undertake under chapter 505 of the Texas Local Government Code.
I'm going to make a motion that we table that until the final meeting because that was not discussed as per the minutes in our previous meeting. It was not a, it's listed in the minutes, but that conversation never.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second to table? Okay. Do we have a motion? Janie, just making sure you're getting, third, eighth is the second?
To clarify which second meeting.
Not the EDC-A. I don't know how we can make a resolution or an ordinance, excuse me, not a resolution. Get straight. A, to define that, when in the meeting minutes from previous meeting that are in our regular meeting, there's a little excerpt that says you said a bunch of stuff you never said in that meeting about said ordinance. So just to clarify that it's done accurately and in that proper thing. We never talked about it in the past.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Cox. Philip, do you want to talk about, any comment about the EDC and what the intent of this is?
Yes.
Before the vote?
Well, if you wanted me to discuss it now, I can. Or we can finish the motion and see from there. But I can discuss what this is about now. So we can still consider it in this meeting prior to the EDC-A meeting. Or we can follow through with the motions.
I'm aware of what it means. I don't know if anyone else is. I just know that we're asking a group that doesn't kind of currently exist to vote on a ordinance from us, a city hall, or a city council, rather, to take on projects for type B that also doesn't exist quite yet. So I feel like it would be better served in the city hall portion, or city council portion of this meeting, as opposed to a town hall portion of this meeting where we have not yet, and this is the first example of this ordinance that has ever been discussed.
The city council is in session.
Yes.
So we had a town hall.
Understood. But again, I mean, in the next consequent meeting, you want us to consider and take action as far as appointing those actual members. So you're having one group make a, that was my.
All right. Is there any further discussion? Questions? All right. All in favor of tabling?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Have questions, please.
Okay. Do we have a abstaining? I'm sorry. No vote? Abstaining? Okay. All right.
Can I get a clarification as to when you're tabling it to?
Well, we can table it till next week on the 23rd. I'm looking at the calendar. Well, this is the city of Simonton City Council meeting right now. The next meeting is the Economic Development Corporation is meeting.
And then this one?
That's back to the city council, back in session.
So we're going back, that's why I'm just saying, move it back to the other city council meeting. Because you're asking us to make a decision about EDC-A. If we're not in the EDC meeting, doesn't it make sense for us to the city council to make a decision before that group is?
We'll have to get some legal recommendation from you if that can be done, or since it's not on the agenda that way.
So, yeah, I'd be concerned with tabling it to another meeting because it's not posted for that meeting. However, it is currently posted for the meeting it's in. And so we may have proper notice. I will note that by tabling this and by not approving, the EDC-A cannot approve any type B projects until this ordinance is passed by the council.
Which would be fine. And we're not like in the future on that, is how I would think. As the next meeting would be sufficient, correct? With timing?
Next meeting, sorry, being?
Next week?
6:30 or next meeting being?
I don't know how many meetings we have next week. I just know I'm supposed to be here.
Okay, the one on the 23rd?
Yes.
Okay. We would need the EDC-A to meet again as well, once that ordinance is passed to approve the project.
Okay. We've not, we had not currently adopted or talked about an ordinance is.
So the city council is the one that has to pass the ordinance before the EDC can meet. So we'll be doing the same thing. City council will meet, then the EDC would meet, and then the city council would meet next week, which is.
Seems like we'll be.
I don't.
Sorry?
I guess we could use some more guidance about what will be different next week than it is today from those who.
In the meeting minutes from, in the meeting minutes from last month, or our last meeting, you have an excerpt there that would be in our consent agenda in the following meeting that was, it did not occur. You state that this gentleman here said all kinds of things about this particular ordinance that did not ever happen. He never, we never discussed an ordinance, we never discussed the need of an ordinance, we never discussed the need for the EDC to be established, which it should have been. We already talked about that a long time ago. But that entire portion of the meeting minutes in the consent agenda that you're going to ask us to approve, and I'm also going to ask you to remove and correct, they, that did not occur. So until we can discuss this ordinance, I don't feel like we need to be voting on anything. That's my stance on it. That's the reason for my asking. I went back to the meeting minutes.
I still don't understand what will be different in a week, but we can certainly, we've already voted to table it.
Just for clarification, ma'am.
Sorry, Janie.
That's okay. No, no, it's important to get this right. So you're tabling it until the 23rd? Okay. And how many, would you raise your hands for those of you who voted nay? I mean, to table it, pardon me.
To table it.
Okay, thank you. And how many voted nay?
I actually abstain, but I do want to change it to nay. So I'm the board.
Good on us.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Philip, on your recommendation with this council, consider and take action on item six?
Yes, it's a separate action.
All right, item six, consider and take action on a resolution of the city council amending the EDC-A Articles of Incorporation and confirming the board members of EDC-A. You can see in your supportive documents that each of you are named as members of EDC-A. The reason that's changing is just because people have changed on the board since that was set up. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
On second.
Just Justin for a second. Do we have any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you. By our agenda, we would adjourn and convene EDC-A?
Correct.
Do we still want to proceed with that?
Yes, because they still need to name a president.
Okay. So item seven is to adjourn the city council special session meeting. It is 6:59. All right. Then we'll call to order the Board of Simonton EDC-A holding its regular board meeting on April 16, 2024 at 6:59 PM. Item one is call to order and establish a forum. Item two, consider and take action on the appointment of a board president.
Yes. So from the, from the five, just need to have a motion on who wants to be president of the board. Vote for the president and then we'll have that as a seated position. In further EDC-A meetings, we'll fill out the rest of the staff. Right now, Janie will act as the secretary for the meeting minutes and then we'll, oh, sorry, yes.
I have a question on that. Are we even able to do that? Because if we do not change the articles, I mean, the.
Orders.
Yes, thank you. If we don't change the ordinance, then this board is not over that. You can't have five people until that's changed.
Yes. So let me, sorry, I apologize. Let me explain. So EDC-A is incorporated and can, and is a five-person board. All the ordinance does is allow EDC-A to conduct type B projects.
That's all.
It doesn't change it to a type B. It doesn't change the requirement of seven people. It doesn't change the requirement or the number of the board. All it does is it allows for everything under chapter 505. All those projects are available to a type A, which this board is, a type A EDC. And so it just gives you that opportunity to expand the project base. And that, that was visualized under the legislature and there's specific under 7,500 persons, citizens, et cetera, et cetera. And that was what I mentioned under section, let me get it right, section 504.171, since we're all looking it up. So right now, of the, of the Texas Local Government Code. And that allows for these smaller cities, in essence, to have one EDC that can accomplish more than, than just an A. So that's what that ordinance would allow. As it currently, as it's currently stated, the EDC-A cannot take on type B just under the, under chapter 501. But as far as setting up a president and setting up bylaws, which we'll do as well eventually down the road, once we have a separate EDC-A meeting and get all that established. This just establishes the board, kind of does some administrative cleanup, what we did with the resolution from the city council. Works, begins the process to amend the Articles of Incorporation, to expand it to where all five members can be employees or council members, et cetera, because the original articles dictated only three. Again, for EDCAs, it's allowed to be all five per the Local Government Code, so it doesn't violate state law. And then now, as the board meets to determine a president, as I mentioned, Janie will secretary on this one, but will establish the secretary, vice, or vice president, I believe, is, et cetera, of that board and then start to convene and have regular meetings of the EDC-A now that we've started that cleanup process.
Philip, can you clarify very quickly so that the rest of everybody here and those out in the audience understand that with the clarification of type A, and had we done that ordinance, it's kind of at, for a while, I don't use that analogy, that's a bad one. Without type, without an EDC-B being established, you're basically asking EDC-A to oversee their projects without asking to form an EDC-B. I already answered this question. It's an absolute yes.
No.
You're asking, because EDC-B is required to have seven, and only three of EDC-A can be on that board, correct?
Three council members.
That's right. So without, with that, with going around it, if you will, and I won't use the word loophole, but without, with asking EDC-A, not yet been formed, is what we're kind of trying to do here, and asking them to perform type B without type B being formed, are we not going around type B at all?
So for the, for what the chapter allows is for those cities that are of this size, that have both the type A and the type B, which we have Articles of Incorporation, both in A and B, and I believe there's budgets and funding for both. Now, the boards haven't sat, but both are incorporated. It allows for type A incorporated EDCs to do type B functions. It doesn't touch EDC-B's funds. It doesn't touch EDC-B's authority to do the projects it can do with it, its funding, et cetera, et cetera. It just allows for EDC-A to also do type B things. The reason behind the legislation is that more and more they're realizing, the legislation has been realizing that it was more restrictive than, than they wanted it to be to allow these sort of economic development projects where type As were very focused on, you know, industrial, et cetera, et cetera. And type Bs had a lot more latitude. And so they wanted to allow smaller cities who may not even be able to sit in EDC-B board of seven people to have more latitude with that type A to conduct what it needed to conduct.
Those projects are quite different, are they not?
They are. And they're recognized under chapter 505 and 504. I'm not going to misquote them. They're two different, I got it, yeah. Yeah. They're both, they're both functioned in different ways.
Yeah.
Yes. But again, the EDC-A is authorized to take on type B projects if the forming body, i.e. the city council who formed it, authorizes it through ordinance.
So Philip, let me ask you. I had looked up what type, what type of projects type A could do and what type of projects type B. So you're saying that it's been updated to include more than it did before? Because according to what the Texas municipal, they had in their economic development handbook, it just seems like we were more restricted than what we were planning on using it for.
If, if you remain just a type A?
Uh huh.
Yes. Yes. If, if through this ordinance, that the type A was allowed to take on type B projects, then you're allowed to take on projects under both categories. And that does broaden the scope and ability. Now, it's still not anything you want. It's not, you know, there are still certain restrictions. And this current project that we, that the council had indicated potentially pulling funds to do, I'll provide it in better terms, the ARPA project, was a project under chap, section 505.155, which is a project to provide public safety facilities and general municipally owned improvements that allow for use of engineers and architects and those sort of things to, to build it, et cetera, et cetera. And so it was based on what I read, understood the project to be, it fit under that section, 505.155, which being under 505 was a type B project. So again, type A cannot do that unless under 504, they, you, the council accepts an ordinance or passes an ordinance that allows type B, or sorry, type A EDCs to conduct type B projects.
All right. And so we're clear that this, this idea is that type A board would spend A money even though you're going to do a B project. And this is to ensure you can fund the 70, you just did that. 76,037.50. The city council said that they wanted to spend 76 from EDC money and 76 from Techpool in order to get to the total that we think that we are home rich from the ARPA project.
Going off, way off the line here. I thought we were doing the board president thing.
Yes.
While we're talking of, you asked all these questions.
Yeah, no, I don't ever remember seeing a number for 76,000.
That's from last meeting. We'll get back to that in a moment.
You're taking half from EDC-A and the other?
Making sure everybody understands what we're talking about, including the board. So the item two is consider and take action on the appointment of a board president. I'm not on the board, but I would make a nomination of that Justin be the president. Are there any other nominations?
I don't know what to nominate for him, obviously.
Justin, would you be willing to serve? I didn't ask you to do that first. Courtney has nominated you. Would you be willing to serve as president?
Sucker.
I'd rather not.
Attorney declines. Any other nominations? All in favor of Justin as the EDC-A president?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Mr. President, this is now your meeting. So, the city attorney is happy to help you through this.
Yes. So, so as, as now the president of the EDC-A, just, and we've called the meeting to order, we, there is a, two, well, three agenda items. But having not the authority to conduct a type B project yet, we can still discuss it as an EDC-A. You just cannot nominate as a project. So if it's something that the EDC-A still determines that you want to do, i.e. spin, and this is where we can bring in, spin the 76, and I'm not going to say the exact number, but it needs to be on the record. You, I'm sorry, do you have that number? On what we'll call the ARPA project, which again, under.
The city hall expansion.
The city hall expansion under 505, or which would be a project under 505.155. So we can still discuss it as an EDC, that that is something we're interested in doing. You could even take a motion that that's something you'll consider if you're given the authority to do so. We just won't have a public hearing and an official. We just won't have a public hearing and an official project proposed for council to consider in the next meeting, right now, until we reconvene and then pass the ordinance to allow it. If that's still the direction the council wants to go, we'll go from there.
Listen at the same time.
Yes.
So is there any discussions on that motion to promote?
I was just wondering, are we stuck with that decision that we made, even though we didn't have the E D C A board? It's just, when I was thinking about it, I thought we were rushing, because we had to make these decisions, because it had to be in place before the end of the year. And all we have to do is say, this project that we want to do, that that's what we'd like to use funds for, for the ARPA project. But it does not have to be completed until two years, until twenty-sixth, December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six. So there's really no rush to do it.
So speaking, this was sitting as city council at that time? The decision was whether or not to award the contract, and which person did council want to build? Council decided to do the entire project. That left a shortfall in, from the ARPA grant money to what we would have to pay. And so instead of council approving an unfunded mandate, if you will, it was council's decision to pay half of the needed overage from E D C and half of the money from Tech Pool. So if you're stuck with that, when your council, lacking your council meeting, I think that decision could be changed, which we have the item at the end of the agenda. But, so right now, you're sitting as A, and we need to decide if that's something this board wants to pursue, if you structure that.
Because I'd love for our E D C money to go through roads and stuff like that. I think maybe... And E D C B is...
Really, we're just discussing not taking action on anything, correct? With the good E D C ordinance?
No, so this is a discussion, and the E D C A board can, can, in essence, come to a consensus, because this is something the E D C wants to do, and then have that discussion with council when you put on your other hat and to, to pass said ordinance at the date it was tabled to. So that you can, no, so you cannot...
I was like, wait a minute.
You cannot elect the project today. But you can discuss the possibility of the project if you're given the authority to do so.
I think what would be helpful, just in discussion, is a clear denomination of, we originally went to the public and said that we were going to spend whatever number was on the, no, two hundred thousand dollars out there, just because it seems like a sound number. If I remember accurately, that we were going to throw two hundred thousand dollars towards roads. We listed out the roads and areas and all of that good stuff, and then hazardly, kind of got, just, I think we made a hasty decision. And the addition of, albeit not a wrong one, I don't think anybody expected that this project, when we first looked at it, was going to come back at almost half a million dollars, as opposed to the two hundred and twenty or two hundred and nineteen in the grant. That being said, when we're asked to add another hundred and eighty at the beginning of a project, before they've ever even touched the ground, we all know it's going to go up. I think we maybe take a better look at it, because with the overview of, we're going to lose sixty-two thousand dollars that we've already, you know, paid to L J A, if we don't utilize it by the end of the fourth quarter, that is not true. That is not true. The money has to be obligated for what we're going to spend it on, as far as a project, but it does not have to be spent until twenty twenty-six.
Okay, but the award has already been made. The city is obligated to...
The award's not signed for a reason.
Well, and didn't we, when we said that we'd awarded it, we also talked to Craig about, it's like, that it could be adjusted, we could kind of redo it in there, so...
I mean, there's always options on the table. You just have to have a construction contract in place by the end of the year.
And it was, it kind of goes back to the other part of the comp plan, and where those budgets sat, as far as how much of those budgets sat in the E D C finances currently, because we didn't discuss that at the last meeting before E D C was formed to begin with. E D C hadn't met since two thousand and twenty-one, so it was, we kind of jumped the gun a little bit. But then, that's okay, we can, we can right that wrong. But in the same aspect, if we can identify where the plan, if we can ensure that the comp plan is paid for accurately, and we're not having to grog this account or that account, or whatever, if that money was put in E D C, where I would think it would be put, but maybe not.
So if you don't mind, the comprehensive plan is not related to this project. The comprehensive plan has already been funded by previous councils, and that money is to be settled.
But in which?
I think you're maybe talking about the ARPA, which is the grant money for the expansion of city hall. Just for confusion's sake, the comp plan is not related to that.
Well, I'm not trying to confuse anybody, I'm just saying the finances, just to be distinct, were the finances for the ARPA agreement, because it was put on hold, it was kind of set in this account until we could utilize it for this, you know, for whatever project we decided to do. Is that was in E D C fund, or was the comp plan in E D C?
No, neither of those was in comp.
So then why don't we just have a town hall meeting with all of that in E D C?
We didn't...
This meeting has got more than one topic coming in. The town hall was about the comprehensive plan, that's closed, moves on, we're doing city business, which includes the E D C moving on to a different project. So they're not intertwined, they just were meeting on the same day. As far as the finances go, the finances, we have separate accounts at New First for this very reason, and we do fund accounting for this reason. So, for example, the ARPA money is in an account by itself at New First, it's two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and seven dollars and four cents, as of today. The Keeps Symoneton Beautiful has its own account, our operating different accounts. E D C A has a minimum account of ten thousand dollars, and then we keep their sweep, we sweep it, so it doesn't have more than ten in their regular checking account, but so like, E D C A has two hundred and thirty-four thousand, four hundred and ninety-seven dollars and twenty-six cents in it, plus the ten thousand in its regular operating. E D C B has three hundred and ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred and ninety-six dollars and eighty-four cents, plus its ten thousand dollars that's in the sweep account. So all that money is kept separately for separate projects. Correct?
I, I get that, but like, you have nine accounts listed here, there's nineteen on this sheet. This is the last management sheet we get received, so before we make any...
So that's from June of two thousand and twenty-three, by the Florida award?
Yeah, but...
This is just a cash view, just like I showed you last month. This is just what's in the bank today, so that you can see that if you had questions about how much E D C money there is, those accounts continue to be separate. Their E D C boards haven't met since two thousand and twenty-one, when COVID had been going on and the board's members withdrew, sorry, pardon me, new people haven't been seated, so those boards have been idle. But that money hasn't been just spent on other things.
To my point, we can't take action on a, on a proposed project, because it would be a type B project, correct?
You cannot propose the project to the council for consideration, no, but you can discuss it. Yeah, you can discuss it as something that the E D C A might want to do, and then can have that ready to go when it's time to meet on the twenty-third. Where we'll have another, if, if E D C A decides that, we'll have another joint meeting in which we'll sit council, and then adjourn counseling, and sit E D C A, and then adjourn E D C A, and then sit council again to finish up the process, in addition to the other items that were going to be on the twenty-third.
Okay, back to you, sir, I don't know if that means rule or...
Are there any other discussions on it that we would like to bring to light? Does matter?
So maybe we need to find out a consensus for E D C A to consider this project?
Yeah, we won't take an official motion, but if you get a consensus, that way we can know direction going forward, how to draft.
Do we have a consensus on the...
Again, it won't be a proposed project until authorized the ordinance, but by having a consensus, we can at least know when we meet next week that, you know, it won't be like, walk away and just get it. Yeah, you can just ask through consensus who, who's willing to consider taking on this, the project as, as discussed, if we are authorized as a type B, or to undertake type B projects. And then, if, you know, if you get kind of three guesses, then you know you at least have a majority consensus for next time the board needs to take official action.
I'm not in consensus on it, just simply because we need to do the ordinance before we do the other, to make us capable of...
Sorry, ma'am, am I blocking you?
Okay.
And yours?
Oh, I think we should move on.
I would, I think we'll discuss it after we pass the ordinance that we were talking about. How do we decide something before we?
You're not, you're not making the decision to propose it as a project. What, all I'm trying to verify is that if it was, if no one wanted to do it, there's no reason to have an ordinance passed by council, there's no reason to meet with the E D C A again, there's no reason to have a resolution, et cetera, so like, there's no reason to do all that legislative items if, if E D C A is not even interested at all. If you're like, sure, we're interested, then we'll set up the meeting to have the ordinance again brought back, we'll have the E D C meet, and then we'll have the resolution. So that's all, it's just for my understanding of how to prepare the next meeting.
Okay, and so I can vote on it as well?
Yes.
So we have three, four.
Okay, so then we'll, we'll prepare for next week, the same thing, have a joint meeting opened with the city council to pass the ordinance, or to consider the ordinance again, then close, adjourn, or in what other, whatever other business we need to conduct, then E D C A will meet immediately after to discuss the project and propose it as an actual project. And then adjourn, and then the city council will meet again to pass the, or to begin the process of passing the resolution on first and second reading of the, to accept that as a project that E D C A can undertake. Yeah, it's, it's not, it's not a vote, so it's just, it's a consensus.
Right, then I want to make sure I have it in the right list.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a consensus item, so that's, that's what I'll bring to this board next week as part of a joint meeting, is that language, very similar to what you have, to fund that project, based on that, after the council meets to pass said ordinance. No, there's, there's no, there's no public hearing, because there's no proposed project. Right, we'll, we'll put the public hearing as part of next week's E D C A agenda item.
Okay, so there's, yeah, we know the project, we will...
Correct, no action for number five, that, just for procedural, what you would do is you would propose the project, you'd have public comments, and then right then and there, you could modify the project being on those comments. And that's kind of how that works. And then accept it as a project that's being proposed, and then adjourn from there. So that just leaves us at item six to adjourn.
It's seven twenty-five.